I'm calling the Committee on Finance and Human Resources to order. I declare there is a quorum of committee members present and note that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. First agenda item is the financial update. Ms. Ashley Smith, you are recognized.
Good evening Chairman Ramsey, Members of the Board, Dr. Ingram. I'll be providing the financial update this evening through February 2018. The general fund budget, we received $17.8 million from local and state sources during the month of February, bringing us to a total year-to-date revenue of $183 million. Our expenditures year-to-date are close to $159 million. Of the $159 million in expenditures, we've expended $83.8 million in instruction, $32 million in support services at the school level, and $42.8 million in support services for all other departments across the district. Eighty-three percent of the overall expenditures are salaries and benefits. The special revenue budget has received $14.6 million year-to-date in state and federal sources and has total expenditures of $15.1 million year-to-date, including 75% spent in salaries and benefits. The EIA budget has received a total of $14 million in revenues year-to-date and has spent $8.7 million year-to-date, with the majority of expenditures in salaries and benefits, along with purchase services. For the capital projects budget, we spent $986,000 in the month of February and $15.2 million year-to-date on various projects throughout the district. We currently have approximately $2.9 million remaining in this budget for our capital needs. The multi-year bond referendum fund has expended $3.9 million in the month of February and $61 million year-to-date. In our child nutrition budget, it includes $1.6 million in revenues, mostly from federal sources during the month of February, bringing the district revenue to $10.5 million year-to-date. Expenditures year-to-date are $11 million, which includes $5.5 million in supplies and materials and $4 million in salaries. All budgets presented this evening are in good standing.
Does the committee have any discussion? Okay then. Second agenda item is out-of-state travel approvals. Ms. Ashley Smith, you are recognized again.
Based on the new travel guidelines, we've been presented with seven out-of-state travel requests. Administration is asking for a motion to approve all seven of the out-of-state travel requests as presented.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, in light of our financial shortfall for this year, and maybe the next as well, I make a motion to approve the seven out-of-state travel requests as presented.
Second, do we have any discussion? We will now call the question. All those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who are opposed respond by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion is approved by a vote of three to zero. Third agenda item is RFQ 531-17 through 18, A&amp;E Services for Sedgfield Intermediate School Building Upgrades. Ms. Ashley Smith, you are recognized again.
Thank you. You have before you an intent to award request for qualifications, 531-17-18 for Sedgfield Intermediate Building Upgrades. This RFQ was issued to secure design services for the work being undertaken at Sedgfield Intermediate pursuant to the settlement with the South Carolina Department of Education in the lawsuit brought forth by the Abbeyville County School District. As part of the settlement of this suit, districts throughout the state, meeting the criteria to be deemed rural, were solicited to submit project proposals to the South Carolina Department of Education for approval and disbursement of settlement funds. The district submitted a proposal entailing multiple scopes of work at SFI, specifically mitigating of failing windows, replacement of individual classroom HVAC units, and aesthetic upgrades to the school's main entrance. In the fall of 2017, we were notified that our total portion of this settlement was Administration is requesting a motion to approve RFQ 531-17-18, A&amp;E Services for Sedgfield Intermediate School Building Upgrades to be awarded to Stubbs, Moldro, Heron Architects, Incorporated.
Do we have any discussion? At this time, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the appointment of Stubbs, Moldro, Heron Architects, Incorporated for the Sedgfield Intermediate School Building Upgrades as a highest-ranking firm during the evaluation, RFQ number 531-17-18, with understanding that the firm fees will be negotiated and reported to the Board for approval.
Second, we will now call the question. All those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who are opposed respond by saying nay. The motion is approved, three to zero. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Fourth agenda item is 2018-2019 allocations. Dr. Karen Whitley, you are recognized.
Thank you. Good evening Chairman Ramsey, Superintendent Ingram, and Board members. At your station, there's a manila folder with some information. There's a corrected version of the 2018-19 allocation formula on top. There was an error on the one that was posted on the Guidance Counselors section on the middle and high school pages. The copy posted reads Saks Recommendation 500 to 1, which is for elementary only. The corrected copies read EEDA Recommendation 300 to 1 for the middle and the high school. We are presenting for your consideration allocation formulas for certified staffing for the 18-19 school year. Ms. Smith and I have worked very closely to bring consistency with the formulas to address students' needs across the district. There are formulas included for certified for elementary, middle, and high. It includes our teachers, guidance counselors, social workers, media specialists, the nurse, principal, assistant principal, ESOL teachers, special services. At the bottom of each sheet in the elementary, in the past, the additional allocations we're asking of, that have been approved previously, we're asking to be approved again. Whitesville Elementary School, a Montessori teacher, Bonner, the two teachers to support the arts infusion program. Hal Hall Ames would be three allocations, a .4 art, .4 music, .2 fiscal education, 1.0 drama, 1.0 dance, to consider to continue their program. Mearnton Middle School, .5 FTE for the following art, music, drama, dance, band or drama. In the high school, we're asking to continue the one-star academy coordinator for Berkeley High School, the two arts teachers for the School of the Arts for Goose Creek High, and a 1.0 football teacher at all high schools.
Does the committee have any discussion? Our questions?
It just seems... Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bear, or Ms. Reverend Spann first? Go ahead.
Yes, I was just looking at class size kindergarten. Is that one for 24, is that correct?
That's one teacher per 24. We do have an assistant in there, so there are actually two adults. That, the class size ratios are actually the ones that have been in place this year also.
Is it state recommended?
The state recommended is like 30 students.
It seemed like 24 is quite a bit.
Sir?
I'd say 24 seems to be quite a bit. Are we having it and trying to work it down smaller?
Certainly. Ms. Smith and I have spoken quite at length. We've worked a lot with this, and we know that this year that our budget is perhaps not as plentiful as it will be in the future. Dr. Ingram has talked a lot with us about recalibrating what we'd like to do as sort of a strategic plan, and it's looking at reducing class size over a period of years in the elementary school.
Well, the state maximum is 30, so we're still well under...
Yep, yes ma'am.
...what's required by the state.
Yeah, I said that because Berkeley County is a growing district, and if we can do better, I think we should.
Well, I agree. I agree with you wholeheartedly. And I think we can over a period of time.
Ms. McQuillan, do you have a question?
I was gonna say, so to the extent certain schools lost allocations, is the place to deal with that in the budget? Is that where we...
When we talk about losing allocations, what we've got here is a formula, and there's been a booklet in Berkeley County for quite a while, that's the allocation booklet. A lot of these formulas mirror what was in that booklet. But what we're looking at doing is following the formulas and being very consistent across the district.
Mr. Bear?
I'd like to make an observation or two. I like the fact that particularly in the middle and high school levels, the allocations are based upon the number of students. Because as educators know, that the larger the school, the easier it is to schedule. The smaller the school, the more difficult, singletons and so forth, so...
Yes, sir.
In other words, the pupil teacher ratio is smaller for small schools...
Yes, sir.
...and larger for larger schools because they're easier to schedule.
Yes, sir.
So I like the delineation, the breakdown there. I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the high school, it says in addition, each school will either have an athletic director or an assistant principal slash athletic director. Does the principal have the discretion?
No, sir. At this point, if you look at the assistant principals, you know, it shows 200, they get one, it's 52, 1153, 1604. In addition, I think we have six high schools that have athletic directors slash assistant principals. And I think they've, as our athletic directors retire or move on to other jobs, they've been replaced with assistant principal slash athletic director. We have two high schools that still have their athletic director in place.
And the head football coach. So those two are basically the athletic director and head football coach, like at Timberland.
Yes, sir, Timberland and Cross. Yes, sir.
And Cross. So that's the distinction there.
Yes.
But in the future, we will not have a separate, we'll have the job separated. Is that what you're saying?
In the future, my understanding is what has been happening in Berkeley County is that as the athletic director resigns or moves on to another position, that instead of hiring an athletic slash head football coach, we're hiring assistant principal slash athletic director.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bear. You and I have both been there, you know, as high school principals. And I think that athletic programs, as they grow, more teams, more kids participating, it's really burdensome for a head football coach to also be the athletic director. However, we do have two who hold that position now, and we don't want to...
Right.
...take that away. But I think the vision in the future would be to assign that to an assistant principal. And also, I think the reality is, and I've talked with the high school principals, and this has been done in lots of other districts across the country, you know, we can work our folks to death. And you can have an athletic director come in at 7:30 in the morning and not get home till 11:00 at night after ballgames. And I would propose, at least, that we strongly consider during sports seasons that that particular administrator, who's also the athletic director, be assigned to come in, let's say 11:00 in the morning or 12:00, and then work through the last person going home at night. That seems fair, and it also condenses and helps one person really focus on the administration of athletics. I think it's very difficult for a head coach in any sport to be the athletic director when his sport's in season, because he's still got a plan for the other sports and those kinds of things.
And in line with that, I think the fact that the Board actually approved recently an increase in the head football coach's salary to attract good quality head football coaches without burdening them with the responsibility of the athletic director as well. So I applaud the efforts of Dr. Whitley in this.
Thank you.
Ms. Lee?
I too am concerned, like Reverend Spann, with the kindergarten number.
Yes, ma'am.
That 24 to 1. Not that I'm saying that we need to have less than 24 children in a classroom, but if we have another adult in the classroom, shouldn't we have that ratio reflect that?
This is for certified allocations, and we're still working on classified, and that's when we'll ask for approval for the classified.
Okay, all right. Well, that helps.
Yes, ma'am.
And our class ratio is that, that is our ceiling. We will not go above that. So, and I expressed this in our workshop, first grade teachers, they've expressed to me over the years that 18 is really kind of unruly at that point. Or when we get beyond that, they can't really teach these kids what they need to. And I know that many teachers have given me the number 15, that that's really their ideal working environment. So at 18, do we create another classroom? Or, I mean, are we really going to be looking at some first grade classes that are going to be 19, 20, and are we going to have fifth grade that are, you know, pushing 30 because our ratio says 1 to 25? I don't know, that's a big question, sorry.
Yes, ma'am. And the way that this has been allocated is 25 is like, it's the number we're shooting for, but there may be some classes with 26 in them. And certainly, we can go back and, you know, at the Board's direction, I will be glad to do whatever you would like for us to do. But in doing the allocations in lieu of the budget constraints in the report that we received from our auditors, we round up, we get to the .5 to the next number of teachers. So it may be that there may be some fifth grades that have 26, 25, 26, 25 in it. But certainly, when that number gets to 27, for example, in a smaller school that has two sections, let's say a fifth grade, if they have 44 students divided by two, you've got 27, then we're allocating three teachers so that we don't go above the 25, 26 mark.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. And can you answer one last question for me? What is a football teacher? Is that like a course that we're going to be offering, or is that in addition to the football coach?
Okay. The football teacher is really your head football coach, and it's considered, he comes in, you know, he coaches, you know, football, and then he does teach a portion of the day.
Oh, okay.
They generally, I'm sorry. They generally teach weightlifting during the day and for conditioning. And because we expanded the salary base, they have responsibilities in the summer to run programs in order to be competitive on and off the field. Having these young athletes, I guess, engaged in the summer is helpful. And not only keeps them safer on the field by being in good physical condition, but they also have the influence of the character that we're looking for and expect in our athletic programs. So I'm not trying to sound like I promote that, like we want to be one big football juggernaut. That's not true. But the truth of the matter is, we also want to be competitive, not just from a win-loss perspective, but from a safety perspective. Athletes are getting bigger, they're getting faster, they're getting stronger. There have been rule changes to protect kids on the field, but if we don't do this, I really, I don't want to sound melodramatic, but I'm concerned about injury on the field when we play some of these other schools that are really larger in number and those kinds of things. That's why I think it's important that we, our competitiveness stay comparable. So small schools should play small schools, larger schools should play larger schools, those kinds of things. So it's a transition, but it's certainly not uncommon.
Do we have a motion?
One other thing I wanted to point out, the special services. I know that we partner with the mental health facility here in Berkeley County, and a lot of times what they'll do is they'll provide counselors to come and work inside the schools. So we may not need to look at hiring any counselors in the near future if we partner consistently with them and work with them. That's a good resource for our school district right there. And I worked for Berkeley Community Mental Health for many years, and I do know that they have some very excellent children's therapists there, so...
Absolutely. And Dr. Gorman can attest to this, that he's working very closely, his department is, with Berkeley Mental Health to possibly increase the number of mental health counselors.
That's awesome. That's awesome.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the 2018-2019 certified allocation formulas as presented by staff.
Second, we will now call the question. All those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who are opposed respond by saying nay. The motion is approved, three to zero. Fifth agenda item is first reading of Board policy revisions, Section G Personnel. Dr. Whitley, you are recognized again.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to introduce our Employment Council, Brandon Gaskins. He's going to be up here to answer all the hard questions for me. So we're asking for first reading approval for policy Section G, which is our personnel policies. These were submitted to the school district by the South Carolina School Board Association as contracted by the school board, and have been reviewed and revised by our Employment Council, Brandon Gaskins, who joins us tonight. We're only asking for first reading approval. Additionally, we worked up until the time of the meeting with Mr. Gaskins, and we've included several of these policies in your manila folder, where we plan to amend at second reading, but want you to have a copy of those amendments or revisions tonight. Of course, we seek your input between now and second reading to these policies, and we can amend at second reading based on your input tonight and in the interim of the meetings. Mr. Gaskins is here to answer any questions you may have, and we respectfully ask for first reading approval.
We have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Concerning dress code GBEBA, the recommendation is that we should not allow, I just didn't thought that our district had a dress code for, what's this, administration or GBEBA? Could you explain?
Yes, Reverend Spann, we currently, or the district currently has a policy that governs dress codes. That is largely being unchanged in these revisions. I think the only revision to that is that we are striking leggings as inappropriate attire. I'm not in the schools, but based on the feedback that I've gotten, that is not consistent with what is worn in the schools and is deemed professional and not a professional. So I think that's the only revision that is being proposed to that policy.
Is this by the state or county?
This is the district's policy, and the district, the school board...
It's always been a policy. But leggings, I guess, came back into fashion with boots and dresses, and I have them up and wear leggings now.
I just didn't know that we had a dress code.
So we had something in our policy that we didn't do.
Right. It said that you weren't supposed to wear leggings, and, you know, my philosophy is if it's a rule and you're not going to enforce it, we need to take it out.
Yeah, just delete it.
Right.
And we actually have had issue with it, so it's something that needed to be addressed.
Just let it go.
So are these your notes here on this chart, or Dr. Whitley's notes?
These are my notes.
Okay. I saw, I just saw you had some questions in there.
So, and I don't know if you've been provided the most recent chart, but what that is, is a description of the policy, the old policy code, the new policy code if it was changed, and a summary of the revisions that are proposed.
Okay.
I did have a question about the drug and alcohol-free workplace in schools, which Does that allow, and I don't have the full revision in front of me, so, but the note says, it says it adds a policy and procedure for drug and alcohol testing based on suspicion. Do we conduct regular random drug tests?
Only for bus drivers, and that's mandated by the state.
Is that...
And there are certain limitations as a public employer. There are limitations imposed by the United States Constitution about what you can and cannot have as far as drug testing. There are questions about whether random drug testing is constitutional or not, and there are different court opinions, certainly. If that's something you want to explore, we can do that, and we can probably address legal ramifications in that session. But the policy as it exists now does not provide more either random or suspicion-based drug testing. This revision allows for drug and alcohol testing based on suspicion.
Was this based upon the School Boards Association recommendation, or is this our own revision?
This is our own revision.
Okay, now, it says based upon suspicion. Who is the determinant of suspicion? The principal or the person's supervisor or...
Well, I think there would be, it would be a collective decision, but it would be the superintendent or his or her designated based on the information that is presented. More likely that designated would likely be the...
So who would provide these testing services?
They have to be, the way the policy is drafted, it is a certified lab. The sample has to be drawn by a certified medical license, you know, nurse or a doctor, and then it is submitted to a lab or a certified by SLE or a couple other certified.
I would be interested in the legal ramifications of a random testing policy as well. I understand we've got different classifications of employees, but I'll just be honest, the opioid crisis and the drug crisis that's happening in this country right now, it's just very hard for me to look at a body of employees of more than 5,000 people and not take every precaution possible to make sure kids are safe. If it's not possible or illegal, you give us good advice on that, we'll take that, you know, under consideration. But I would be interested in expanding that and understanding the legal ramifications of a full program. I'm probably on a limb. I haven't talked to anybody else about this, but...
I agree.
There's just too much out there, and I want my kids, every single kid, safe.
Yeah, it's a common issue. Any other discussion?
I'd like to just commend him on combining a lot of the policies that were separate for professional and classified staff. I think that was a good move on your part. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was one of the goals that we had, so it can be a little daunting at times when you pull up policies, make them clear and easier to understand.
And just a final note, I agree with Reverend Spann is saying. I think a very thorough, excellent job was done as far as revamping our policies, because I know we did have a lot of discussion and thoughts as far as what we had gotten from the School Board Association versus what we wanted to do here at Berkeley County. But just one final note is please make sure that any of the final revisions that are done, that they are sent to all the board members before the next meeting, so that all the board members can have a good look at the final revision. board members can have a, a good look at every, the final revisions, which I know you will, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Yes, sir.
Just one, one point of clarification, are there any major deletions or additions to the current policy that are being revised here? In other words, are we going to say, oh, I, I didn't catch that? We're deleting something that shouldn't be deleted or adding something that is controversial?
What I would recommend is that you look at the chart and see the summary is...
I've seen that.
Is in the eye of the holder what's significant and what is not.
I've read most of them, but I haven't read all of them. There's a lot to, to read here. It's quite a few.
I would hate to give you some information.
Okay, all right, well, we have some time between now and the second reading.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
And this will actually, this will be one of those ones you'll think is never gonna end, because it's gonna come to the full board, then it's gonna come back to committee, then it's gonna go back to the full board, so there should be plenty of opportunity to consume this, because it'll take us a month from now to get to where we need to go.
Mr. Chair, making a motion to approve the board policy, a Section G personnel revision as presented.
Second, we will now call the question. All those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who are opposed respond by saying nay. The motion is approved by a vote of three to zero. Thank you, Dr. Whitley.
Thank you.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this committee meeting so that the facilities and capital planning committee meeting can begin.
So move.
Second, all those in favor of adjourning respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.